Mr. Schamani is here and has been here since early this evening. Number 10 will move up to between 2:00 and 3:00, please. And the divisional reports will go down to the end so that we can see where we are in the timeframe. District Attorney Stephanie Salvanas is here with us this evening.
Do you want to do your call?
One second. And we'll begin with that when we start the session. We're going to skip through the allegiance and moments of silence because we've already done that. We'll have roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Here.
Mr. Haas. Ms. Houck Diddley.
Okay. Move on.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Riedel?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog.
Here.
I do believe Mr. Haas is still here.
Okay. But he's not current?
In the room, correct.
Okay. Do we have adoption of the agenda? Motion?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Vog and Mrs. Schnee, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. District Attorney Salvanas, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I can't believe this is the ninth year that I will be presenting to you guys and I appreciate the time and I know that your time is valuable. I know you guys have had a lot on your plate tonight, so I'm going to try to get through this as fast as I can while you could still understand it. And I provided you the printouts of our PowerPoint, so you know, if you're bored one night and want to read through, it's available to you. So, I wanted to start out with new cases open. As it states, does not include juvenile cases, cases under investigation, PFA violations, things of that nature. With Central Court, we have a new addition this year to show you cases that have been resolved early on. So, new cases that opened but resolved at District Court are 2064. These are cases where our office would have assisted or provided guidance to law enforcement, approved search warrants, approved pleas. So, our office is very involved in these cases. The total new Court of Common Pleas cases for 2019 was 4,475 and, as you see, disposed of in 2019 Court of Common Pleas cases was 4,293. Cases called to trial by judge, you'll see that Judge Lupus, Judge Sklarowski, and Judge Vog have the majority of the cases because they are our primary criminal judges. And Judge Ojello, he is dedicated to DUIs, so that's why he has a large amount as well. Judge Gartley and Judge Parentoni, the three mainly represent major crimes like homicides that they would be in the rotation for. The total cases called for trial was 3,097 in 2019. DUI cases, and you know every year I emphasize how important it is to talk about DUIs in the county and how one-third of our caseload really goes to driving under the influence and it still continues to be a problem. It's something that we continue to talk about and try to address with different coalitions in the county, like the Stop Coalition, focusing on substance use disorders. As you see, there were a total of 1,036 DUI cases. And I wanted you to see the times a year that it fluctuates. There are more than that, but they may be included in other cases. Say, for instance, if there is a DUI and an officer pulled the individual over and found that they were in the possession of meth, the meth would take precedence, so they would be included in the drug statistics that we have. Juvenile cases. I wanted to break it down for you, let you see how many juvenile cases. These are cases that are not included are the cases where juveniles receive informal adjustments or warrant counsel, that's they don't go in front of a judge. Sort of working with the child without going in front of the court. Last year, if you guys remember, I said we were having a problem with juveniles committing more violent offenses. And I wanted to show you this year what we're talking about. Last year, at the end of the year, we had a total of 14 direct file cases. So you understand, most direct file cases are 15-year-old juveniles or older charged with a felony one charge with a deadly weapon. So, these are violent offenses that are being committed within the community. So what we do is, we file them directly in adult court. We have, of the 14 so far this year, I did want to tell you that two of those 14, we were successful in keeping them in adult court. We went through a hearing, and they're extensive, just so you know. Juvenile decertification hearings where defense attorneys filed these petitions to decertify the juveniles, these are like mini-trials. So, the last decertification hearing we had was a couple days and it was morning to night. And they are important because it determines the outcome of where this juvenile who committed this violent crime will end up and what their future will look like. So, we put a lot of resources from the prosecutor's side as well as the defense side. So, a lot of money goes into experts and it comes down to the experts explaining why a child would or would not be rehabilitated within a certain period of time until they reach the age of 21. So, we had two successful hearings in which the individuals remained in adult court. One took a plea and two pleas are in place at this point. They haven't taken it, but they are in place. So, of those 14, we have five, we have worked on five of them that, and determined what the possible outcome will be. Youth Aid Panel, you guys know all about the Youth Aid Panel, I talk about it every year. We had 56 juveniles met with our panel and were given a contract. Of those 56, 36 were successfully completed, seven failed and 13 are pending. So, I just wanted to break it down. So, you see, the Youth Aid Panel is giving a juvenile a second chance and I, this is something that I'm very passionate about and finding different ways to help our juveniles that are in the system. ARDs, you guys know accelerated rehabilitative dispositions. We had a total of 585 last year. 370 were approved. We were able to collect a total of 120,000 approximately, give or take, in revenue to help support our office and these programs that we're able to provide. I wanted to touch on the opioid epidemic. I know this has been a big conversation in our community and throughout, so I thought I'd touch upon it a little bit and show you some good news that we're seeing. So, you see the pattern. The good news is, in 2019, we only had 122 overdoses. I hate saying "only," but it has decreased substantially from 2018. I think it's because of the work we're doing on the streets and providing people with the naloxone to help bring someone back who may be dying from an overdose. So, as you see, we've been trying to get these kits in the hands of so many people that could help someone who may be overdosing. The total number of kits, that's 436, that we were able to distribute last year. And that is, for each distribution, you're talking about two, four-milligram doses because the drugs that we're seeing on our streets are becoming stronger. They're making them stronger and that's why we're seeing the overdoses. So, it went up from one dose to giving two doses every time you experience someone who's overdosing. We have 39 police departments, 10 EMS, 10 school districts, two colleges. We give it to the day reporting center, probation and the prison as well. So, making sure that it is in the hands of everyone. And then we had an event, we worked with Wicksbury's Department of Health and gave them 180 doses that could be given out to the public. So, a parent that knows that their child is suffering from substance abuse, that they could hold on to that just in case their child may overdose in their home and they could revive them. This is a program that I started last year. It's still a pilot program, so I only wanted to keep it limited on the number of police departments so I can examine how we can make it better. This was an alternative to, if you recall, to, instead of arresting people left and right that, you know, you're seeing professionals in the community that are overdosing or that are stealing to feed their habit. We're looking at them and saying, "We're going to give you a second chance. We're going to allow you to complete this 90-day contract. We worked closely with Luzerne County Drug and Alcohol to make this possible." And they set up a 90-day program for these individuals. If they complete that program, criminal charges are never filed on them. So, we hold on to those charges and if they complete it, we do not file them. So, they do not get involved in the criminal justice system at all. We started it with Hanover Township and Kingston Borough Police Department. And Luzerne County probation has been involved in this as well. So, total, we've had 35 people go through the program. You'll see 16 completed in 90 days. We have two active right now and 17 non-compliant. So, I know people are looking at that number and saying, "Well, there's 17, is this working?" It is working. We had 16 completed successfully and have been going out into the community and saying, "I've been given a second chance and I'm taking that chance and making something of my life with it." So, it has been a wonderful experience. Treatment Court is another area. I, as you know, I like to emphasize how important Treatment Court is to, not only our county, but to our nation. They do such amazing work between all different disciplines, from the courts to defense attorneys to prosecutors to probation and the services provided. And I wanted to give you a breakdown from the start of Treatment Court. We had 237 graduates. What's interesting is you see the GEDs earned. I think that's important because we're working, trying to make, to help them become productive members of society and be able to leave Treatment Court with the possibility of going out and trying to get a job and working with them on resumes and all of those things that are needed in order to progress in life. Drug-free babies. This was another big area that we just started telling people about because this is a major problem. So, we had 24 drug-free babies born due to the individuals participating in Treatment Court. We have a wonderful recidivism rate, which is that they do not reoffend within, by the third year, they're in Treatment Court for three years. The 4% is a reoffending rate. So, you'll have 96% of people will never reoff, have not reoffended after completing Treatment Court. As you know, heroin and other opiates have been the number one. Meth and marijuana, we're seeing is number two and three. And I think this is where you guys pay particular attention because always dealing with the budget and looking to find ways to save. Total savings to date by Treatment Court, to have them participate in Treatment Court is approximately $9.7 million. It's astonishing when you see the amount of work that these people put in and the work they need to get their lives in order and keeping them out of the prison. You'll see $94 a day compared to 12 days in Treatment Court. It's really, it's a no-brainer. So, we are constantly trying to look, to find ways that we could expand our Treatment Court and allow more people to be included in it. We only have so many probation officers, so it's difficult. They have to be able to stay on top of these individuals because that's how they know that, and they are successful in completing. I wanted to touch upon the Drug Task Force. As you know, we have a Drug Task Force Coordinator. And as of December, we were able to hire four part-time narcotics agents that are dedicated to doing drug work throughout the county. We have 39 agencies involved and that totals 282 law enforcement members. So, we, to me, we have a great effort in fighting the drugs being sold on our streets. We're providing trainings. We do two county-wide trainings every year that are heavily attended, trying to cover as much as we possibly can in a one-to-two day course, as well as funding our local law enforcement and remaining up to date on trends as well as new laws that are taking effect. So, we constantly try to provide that to our law enforcement and provide whatever resources we can for them, including equipment that helps them continue to do the work that they do because their municipalities aren't able to fund some of this stuff. And because of this addition, it is important to point out that we have been able to provide more assistance to our local police departments when it comes to major cases involving drugs. We have had numerous cases from December on, including homicide shootings, where we're able to send many guys out, more boots on the streets to solve these incidents as fast as we possibly can, including, as you probably saw, the most recent being just, not even a week ago, we were able to make an arrest within 24 hours. So, that goes towards being able to have the resources to put into assisting these This is a breakdown of 2019 and what just the Drug Task Force was accomplished. So, we made 125 arrests, 138 cases were initiated. We were able to get 23 weapons off the streets. We were able to seize $86,793. And there is a breakdown of the drugs that we were able to take off the streets due to the work that our task force is accomplishing. And I'm not going to go through that specifically, you guys have that in your packet. I did want to show you to date because now that we have the part-time officers, that there has been a drastic increase in what we've been able to accomplish in just the two months so far this year. To date, we were able to make 33 arrests, seize, and this is just for the task force. You'll see we have gun violence as well, Reduction Task Force, but seize six weapons, forfeited approximately $77,000, and were able to take a large amount of drugs off the street just in two months. And I want to emphasize that, that all of this work and the officers, the expense of the, all the officers and the equipment and everything that goes into our drug work is fully funded by either the Attorney General's Office because of the District Attorney's Office taking over the supervision of the Luzerne County Drug Task Force. So, we're able to get money from the AG's Office as well as when we are able to seize and forfeit money, we're able to use that for only specific reasons or certain reasons and that is specific to drug work. So, that money is able to go into funding additional positions or overtime for law enforcement and equipment to continue doing their job. So, the Luzerne County Drug Task Force is fully funded through that and it is not funded through any taxpayer money. And if it does, to point out, if it does go through the budget, it is reimbursed through an expense reimbursement line item in our budget. This is another hot topic. I know there are many people that go around and talk about this. There's a lot of misinformation out there, so I wanted to let you, inform you guys about what is actually taking place. The drug delivery resulting in deaths. So, this is when people who sell or give drugs to someone who then dies of an overdose from those drugs, they can be charged for that based on state law. And so, and they could be facing up to 20 to 40 years. And that's dependent on their criminal history. So, this was a hammer that legislators wanted to provide to prosecutors to say, "We're sick and tired of people selling drugs to our residents and we're seeing them die left and right. We need to do more." So, all the counties have been trying to work hard and trying to investigate who is selling the drugs and if they are responsible for selling the drug and which caused the overdose and death. So, in 2019, we had 13 total cases that we investigated for drug delivery resulting in death. Three cases have been charged by our office and are pending. Three cases, if they go to, as you see, they were referred to the U.S. Attorney's Office, we do the entire investigation. So, we investigate from beginning to end and then we sit down with the Attorney General's Office and we ask them, "Would you be willing to take this case?" Because they may have a stronger sentence that they could give to the defendant. So, we work together and determine who's best in handling these cases. So, we were able to refer out three of those cases to the Attorney, U.S. Attorney's Office and we currently have seven cases from 2019 that are still under investigation and pending So, I do want to tell you too, we and other counties have followed Luzerne County's protocol and we have been able to guide a lot of these counties through this. And the reason being is because our Luzerne County Drug Task Force Coordinator is responsible for taking all the calls when an overdose occurs. So, an overdose fatality occurs. So, he will communicate with law enforcement as soon as something like that happens and they will make a determination within 48 hours if we can proceed with possibly investigating and prosecuting. And why that's important is because we have an agreement with the Coroner's Office that they will hold on to the body for 48 hours to allow us that time to do an investigation into it. And we could also ask for an extended period of time if we need it because it does cost about, I'm guessing, $2,000 to maybe $2,500 sometimes to do these autopsies. So, we don't want to waste taxpayers' money when we may not be going anywhere on cases. So, we're working hand-in-hand with the Coroner's Office to make sure that we are taking any case we can, that we can establish the evidence of a case that possibly can lead to a prosecution. And this is what I was talking about earlier. We were able to obtain a grant last year for Gun Violence Reduction Task Force. And what that includes is a full-time and a part-time agent within our office. And it was for $250,000 over a two-year period. So, just within, I will say, let's say, a month, because by the time they started and were able to actually get into their position, we were able to open 20 gun-related cases and continue to investigate them. Of those 20 cases, we had two felony arrests that came of them. And during interviews on those cases, we had potential arrests for unsolved homicide, confession to an armed robbery, possible federal indictment for sex and drug trafficking. So, it's important that we have experienced investigators that are handling these cases, which we have right now, and knowing what to look for. These are, the investigators we hired for these positions are, have 30-plus years of experience in these fields, drugs and guns. So, they know what to look for and they are very active right now. And then we had five misdemeanor arrests out of that. So, we are continuing to work on all cases that we find that a gun may be related. They will be able to assist any local law enforcement in any of their cases as long as there is a gun related. And we will continue to look into where that gun came from, if we could do, investigate if there was a straw purchase or something along those lines. So, we're trying to work up the chain and find the people that are bringing these weapons into our communities and really creating havoc within our neighborhoods. Internet crimes against children. We had 76 cyber tips from the National Center. So, we have a detective, Chaz Ballow, who is dedicated to following up on all these tips that come in. Of those, we were able to conduct 33 search warrants and made 31 arrests last year. Another, I don't want to get too into detail because, as you know, internet crimes against children, this is a very delicate topic. So, what I do want to emphasize is, we try to be very proactive in the community. We try to get out there and speak to groups about being smart when it comes to our phones, when children have phones. We're seeing a lot of that parents aren't monitoring their kids when they're on their phones. They're communicating with people throughout the world and providing pictures of themselves or talking certain ways and all of that is getting out. So, we're trying to be very proactive in educating parents, educating community groups, educating our children. And we were able to speak to thousands of people and children and families last year. So, I just wanted to include pictures. And that includes Spike. Spike goes to all of the events. He's probably the mascot for the courthouse at this point. Everybody looks for Spike. But Spike has done tremendous work here in Luzerne County and throughout. So, he is, and I don't want to pat Spike on the back, but I will, I will emphasize the importance of what Spike does. So, he is able to, if you recall, last year I explained when we got Spike through, fully funded through a grant, his purpose is to go into homes and be able to find electronic devices that the human eye may not be able to find. He has been able to assist local, state, federal agencies, including finding information devices for homicides. So, he's been able to go out and assist many different agencies on this. And this is through, and I have to give them a plug, Operation Underground Railroad is the one that fully funded this, spiked for us and continues to provide us resources because Spike is, to them, one of the best dogs in the nation. They have not seen a dog been able to do the things that Spike has been able to do. And I, recently, I think this is an interesting story, recently, and I don't want to say if it's federal, state, local, but in a prison, they were on lockdown for weeks because there was a phone that was being used and that, by using that phone, they, the individuals in the prison were able to continue to sell drugs and bring drugs into the prison. They did not know what to do. It was constant, so they were on lockdown for weeks. They looked throughout the entire prison. They had it narrowed down to a couple different areas, but they didn't, they didn't know where to go. Finally, someone recommended, "Call Chaz Ballow, Detective in Luzerne County. He's a dog that is well-known and he's good." They called, Spike was able to find the phone in no time and he's their little hero right now. So, they were thrilled by that. Okay. Budget. Let's get to that. So, to make it quick, we, for our budget, what was budgeted in the beginning of 2019 was approximately $4.57 million. We had to amend the budget because we obtained another grant. It was a SWAT grant for, it was $49,994. So, that's why you see amended budget there. That was a grant that provided us equipment to start county-wide SWAT. So, we had the amended budget and a total expended for 2019 was $4,514,339. So, total savings for our budget, 2019 budget, was $105,438. Revenue. We had, as you could probably tell by my constant discussion of grants, I'm a big advocate of trying to find whatever grants we can to help support the programs that we have in our office. So, grants, last year we were able to bring in $468,000. And I have it broken down for a federal and state expense reimbursement, $298,000. That's, I know, Harry, you're always asking me, "The DA's salary, which we're up to date on?" I looked into that for you. The Drug Task Force expenses that I told you about in order to fund those positions. The Drug Task Force expenses that I told you about in order to fund those positions and any overtime, the youth aid panel, and mental health, our mental health prosecutor. So that's what they go to reimburse. Our ARD fees, as I discussed with you earlier, and miscellaneous fees, like if someone files for a right to know, to pay a certain expense restitution, and expungements, we were able to bring in approximately $22,000. So we had an increase in our revenue of $81,985. So I did want to go through that with you. And, you know, I've been here, it's crazy to say, like I said in the beginning, nine years. This is my ninth, my ninth presentation, a total of eight years working as District Attorney. And I wanted to emphasize, you know how I am, I am, I am cheap. I watch every dollar. And I wanted to show you the total savings over the eight years as District Attorney. This is how much I was able to save by being frugal and watching every dollar in our office and knowing how important it is, because I don't want to waste taxpayers' money. And I take it very seriously. So I did want to emphasize that. I know a question came up from a council member about the purchase of a vehicle last year. And so I wanted to go into that as well, because I know that it was a discussion with council about the vehicle. So for those of you that weren't here last year with, and are new to the board, and may not have been included, I think you were, so I'll just sum it up. So we had, in our budget last year, $70,000 put in a line item for capital cases. We ended up being able to flee out one of the cases, which gave us a major savings. One of the vehicles that we had in our fleet, and are actually still using, I'm trying to put it aside and say it's not safe anymore to, to use, was our 2007 Chevy Suburban. This was a Suburban that was given to us in 2013 from the Coroner's Office. So it tells you how old and how much wear and tear this vehicle had. We were informed that the frame of the vehicle was cracked. And so at that point, I had to make the decision of purchasing a new vehicle because we had to replace that vehicle. I met with County Manager Dave Pedry, and we discussed how, I know that in 2020, it was a difficult time. We were trying to cut as much as we possibly could because we didn't want to look at increasing taxes at all, let alone increasing it to 5%. So one of the decisions that we made was that we would purchase the vehicle in 2019. And we received a vehicle quote, a local quote, and we got three quotes from local companies in the area, and the lowest being $38,000 for a vehicle. So we went ahead and made the purchase, and I have to emphasize again, we still came in under budget by $105,000. So I wanted to make that decision. I thought it was a wise decision at the time, and I know that that was something that I was questioned about. So I did want to explain all of that to you guys. We have to make sure that we monitor these vehicles. I, within the past two years, had a vehicle, because of the age of the vehicle, the brakes went while we had a detective driving it. I don't want to see that anybody is ever injured in these vehicles. So I take that responsibility very seriously, and that's why I wanted to make sure that we moved forward on the purchase of this vehicle. But other than that, I know I talked fast, and I hope you guys got it all, but I just wanted to make sure I was as quick as possible so you guys can move on. I will open it up to questions if you guys have any.
Questions for District Attorney?
Are there any human trafficking cases through your office, or do they all go through the US Attorney's Office?
We work on investigations with our detectives and local law enforcement. We have had, and we are part of, the Human Trafficking Task Force. So we work together as a group, including the US Attorney's Office in with us. Most of the time, they just go through the US Attorney's Office. We've had cases in the past where we did prosecute, but we're seeing more and more of it, because it's not, most of the time, it's not just prostitution. It's, there are kids being brought in from cities, being prostituted out. So we're paying very close attention to that and trying to stay on top of the trainings and information that's being provided to us from the federal government as well.
Other questions?
Yes, I see with the DUIs, there was 1,036. 370 were approved, 88 are pending. So that gives you like 580. Are they repeat offenders, that they weren't approved?
What the ARD?
Oh, for ARDs you're talking about. ARDs don't have to be just DUIs. They could be a, a program, it's, it's to focus on individuals that have a high probability of being successful in treatment and rehabilitation, and it's a first time, or have not committed a crime within 10 years. That's, that's what I focus on. So it could be a retail theft that went through. Things of that nature. It's not just DUIs.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to congratulate you again that you've done an outstanding job in your nine years, and you've established a great team of assistant district attorneys and everybody that works in your office. We're proud that you're our District Attorney.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Send the sentiments to your team.
Every time. I tell them every time.
Without your team, you're nothing.
A while back, I spoke to a state trooper, and he was talking about the way Central Court operates. And I guess he had been off on a given day, and he had a substitute state trooper fill in for the case.
I think I know where you're getting at.
Case was dismissed, and the paperwork has to be redone, recertified. The individual has to be picked up and re-fingerprinted and everything has to be recertified.
Yes.
Do you feel that is a sort of like, an issue as far as productivity?
Absolutely. And I've had now, had conversations with now-President Judge Voege about those issues. He has taken them very seriously. Because my, I agree with you, it's, we're picking these individuals up again, having to fingerprint them again, and the numbers are not correct then. That's my feeling, because now you have to create another number for this individual because the case was dismissed. And it's not just that, we've had incidents where officers are there, but say the victim didn't show up, and they didn't ask for a continuance before, but the District Judge said, you know what, I'm not going to continue this anymore, I'm going to dismiss it. They are permitted to ask for a continuance, and it should be provided to them. So we've had those conversations. I've even had the conversation of officers aren't showing up sometimes because they're not getting noticed. So I'm trying to stay on top of it. I've told all of, and I have a chief's meeting on Monday to discuss all of this. I'm telling them all, make sure I'm aware, so President Judge Voege is aware of it as well, because he wants to know so he can address them.
Okay. And then lastly, regarding like, mental health cases too, approximately how many people may be arrested or charged with mental health cases? Because that, you know, I know personally, I've been involved with one case with somebody that I know, and police have been called out numerous times. At one point, the subject was, was arrested. But I think, you know, as, as a county, we can do a lot better job with getting to that point. You know, I call police officers, oh, we're not social workers, you have to go down to hospital, 302 the person, and then we'll pick them up. Well, that's after the incident has occurred at the home. And then, you know, we're wasting a lot of valuable resources on the streets where these officers are going to homes multiple times. And I think, you know, something needs, we need to build a bridge between law enforcement and the mental health care system and the providers in this area. And, you know, I'm going to be a strong proponent going forward to trying to find a better way to do this, because, you know, it is a waste of resources when an officer gets called in. Some officers will tell you, hey, we've been at a house 20 times.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, for the same, same person. And it's very common, right. And so I think from a mental health care perspective, we need to do a better job with the human services.
I completely agree with you, and I think that mental health is the biggest problem right now, because it's not being taken as seriously as it should. I think you see a lot of overdoses and people turning to drugs because they're underlying, the underlying issue is a mental health issue. And we're not addressing that clearly. And one thing, one problem we have, especially in the criminal justice system, is that we don't have enough beds or enough treatment facilities for these individuals. Like, we have people that are sitting in jail, who shouldn't be sitting in jail, that should be in a mental health, a mental hospital, getting the treatment that they need, but because there isn't space for them, we are just, they're, they're really falling apart in our prison system. So it is a major issue, and I'm glad that you're a big proponent of addressing it and staying, becoming an advocate for those.
Well, yeah, and like I said, I'm very intimately involved with this, this particular, you know, family, and, you know, you're also talking about the environment at home becomes stressful to the parent, you know, this person's an adult, everyone, you know, and even myself getting involved, I mean, I've even spoke to the CEO of Commonwealth Health, Core Cantina, you know, and, and even one of his middle managers at one time, and I can name names, and he said, you know, maybe he needs some H and H. And I said, is that handcuffs or homelessness? Oh, well, that's not the answer. You know, and that's one of the providers that, that we contract with here at the county. So I take a little bit of offense to that, I take issue with that, you know, and really, I'm going to put the county, you know, in more of a light to try to help them along, you know, going forward. I think we don't do enough of it.
And I know there are a lot of roadblocks and lack of resources, and so it's a major issue. It's not, I will say, this is a bigger issue than the county. This is a statewide, national issue that I have constantly been talking to our legislators, state and federal legislators, saying, what are you doing about this? Because if I'm seeing it and saying it's a major problem, all of my other DAs and US Attorneys and everyone that's involved in the system see it as well. So this is something that we, as, as leaders in our community, should stand up and say, we need them to do more for us.
Right. I mean, these, these people don't deserve to be in trouble in the first place, you know, and then that can be prevented, you know, if we just have the right processes in place and the right protocols.
And we do have, just so you know, because a lot of people ask us about it, we do have a team in place, a training in place, that brings mental health, our law enforcement, our EMS, all these different disciplines together. And when there is a situation where someone may be going through an episode and may have a weapon, and how do you de-escalate this situation without harming anyone in the process? So we do regular trainings in the county to make sure that as many of our law enforcement and providers are, are educated on that. So I think that's, that is something that is so important for all counties to be involved in.
Yeah, well, a lot of times, the episode already has occurred, though, and it's beyond the escalation at that point. It's, the damage has been done, the house has been destroyed, and at that point, things have kind of cooled off with the individual, but then they go about their business like nothing ever happened, because of what's going on. So, you know, I mean, those are the other type of cases. I know every one of those cases has to be treated as an individual, because they are all different in their symptoms. But I don't think we do a good job at identifying those symptoms, you know, ahead of time. And so I, you know, that's, I'd like to have a little more discussion, maybe, you know.
Any other questions?
Stephanie, what's your caseload for her attorney duty, would you say?
That is hard to give you a number on, because each attorney specializes in different areas. So say, for instance, a special victims prosecutor may have, on a regular basis, 50 to 60 cases. But they are involved from the moment it begins working with the officer to doing the preliminary hearing and going through trials, staying with the case the whole time. And most of them, a lot of them are trials, where a drug case, a prosecutor that does drug work may have 150 cases regularly. And you know, there's a big difference between them, but it is overwhelming at this point, the number of cases that they are handling.
How many do you have?
29.
20.
Yeah.
Anyone else? I just have two comments. You've done a great job, I think, with your budget, as far as managing the budget every year. I appreciate that. I think the vehicle purchase was a well-thought-out decision. Obviously, the safety of people who drive those vehicles and could be passengers is very important. And finally, I think the Drug Treatment Court, I've been lucky enough to be able to go to a couple of those graduations. Attorney Deluca here to my left is a person should be very proud of, the one person who went through that court, and really has done a phenomenal turnaround with her professional life and personal life. And if you just have one of those successes, it's well worth it.
Yes, absolutely.
I think that's a testament to everybody involved. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Eddie?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Eddie, you weren't with us last time. We would appreciate your presence the last time, so we would hope that when you have an item on the agenda, please, wherever possible, you know, I'd like to see you that evening.
Understood. The rezoning application is for three properties owned by Socorro Brothers Paving, three parcels in Ross Township. They are requesting a rezoning of the property, which currently is split zone between B3 Highway Business, S1 Suburban Residential, and A1 Agriculture, to all B3. They are going to then take the three parcels, consolidate them into one parcel, and then develop it as a self-storage facility on Main Road in Ross Township. That is the basis of their request. Planning Commission recommended approval on February 13th. And there was one couple, an adjacent property owner, that attended and expressed support at the Planning Commission hearing.
Express support?
Yes.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Eddie? If not, this will be on our voting agenda the next time we meet. Thank you. Moving number 10 up, and that is the discussion regarding resolution, approved of the contract with the Elite Revenue Solutions LLC, for collections of LEAP and real estate taxes. And actually, number nine would be associated with that, because that is the lease that's involved with the space here at the courthouse. Mr. Schmante? Dean, I don't know your last name, but?
Emo.
Thank you.
Well, good evening. Thank you so much for having us here. We'd like to thank County Council, County Manager, the interview committee for recommending us. We believe we did a tremendous job over the past 10 years. I'm here again, I'll give kudos to the person to my right, Nadine Emo. She basically runs the office on a day-to-day basis, and I would not be here without her and nothing but the best to my employees, and she is one of them, and I'll tell you that. And I think she has the respect of everybody in this county, believe me when I tell you that. So we are in the process of a corporate restructuring with a name change, and you should have received a packet, as I sent to Chairman McGinley.
We sent that out yesterday, the letter that you forwarded.
Very good, yes. So we had a ownership structure change in the last quarter of 2019. We are in the process of rolling out our new name, which is Elite Revenue Solutions. And I just would like to go over and summarize, I'm not going to read everything verbatim, but I'd just like you to summarize some of our accomplishments and points that we have made through the last 10 years as being the agent for the Luzerne County Tax Claim Bureau. So we are an experienced firm in Pennsylvania that operates all aspects of large-scale public collection operations, which in turn is tax claim bureaus. Not everybody can do that. Through our many years in the industry, the firm has learned a lot about how difficult debt collection can be, which is why we make intentional efforts to help everyone involved. We like to partner with the governments, our employees, the taxpayers alike. We work for you, the client, and we always say that. Since taking the lead in Luzerne County a decade ago, our company has made it a priority to treat all taxpayers equally by enforcing the real estate tax sale law, which is commonly referred to as RETCEL. Unilaterally, we enforce that, and we eliminate any opportunity for special arrangements, as long as everything occurs under RETCEL. And if we reach a stalemate where taxpayer cannot meet the conditions under which RETCEL prescribes, we then turn it over to a county judge. And right now, our county judge that hears all of our cases is Judge Parentoni. As a result of taking a hard As a result of taking a hard stance on collection efforts, the overall collection rate for county taxes, uh, is up to ninety-four percent, which is a significant increase from when we took over. Prior to two thousand and ten, the collection rate for county taxes was averaging at eighty-three percent. So that was a tremendous increase. Along with that, and I believe Mayor Cassatt spoke to this earlier, we've also increased the municipal collection average from seventy-nine percent prior to us taking over to ninety-three percent, and the average school collection rate has increased from eighty-four percent to ninety-five percent. How did we get to this point? Well, we just created a more efficient, effective bureau, uh, and that included creating a more efficient system for residents to make payments, which would include online payments. We opened up a part-time office in southern Luzerne County, in my hometown of Hazelton, and, uh, that has been well-received by a lot of people who come into our office on a daily basis and say, oh, thank goodness that I don't have to drive all the way up to the county to make a payment on my delinquent taxes. So the, uh, people of southern Luzerne County do appreciate that. And we've also offered accepting payments at five landmark bank branches throughout the county. Along with this, what we do is send out monthly reminder letters on top of all of the documentation that is required under RETL. So, you know, what we've always seen is, of course, if you don't get a bill, you're not gonna voluntarily come up and make a payment. So we like to stay on top of taxpayers by sending out a courtesy letter, what we recall, we call a reminder letter on a monthly basis, and that is what has helped us to increase those, uh, collection rates so drastically over the years. We also created and maintained, uh, a website for Luzerne County. It is luzernecountytaxclaim.com. It sounds to me like many of you have been there, uh, based on seeing if there's taxes open on different, uh, parcels. I will give you a little hint that it does also work. I tell all my relatives to use it for Christmas cards, because you could search by last name and find out people's addresses. But that is updated nightly, which is obviously good. So if a payment is made in our office, uh, today, at eleven o'clock tonight, or around midnight tonight, uh, the, all of the data is updated, so it's current the next morning. And it does state that online. This has been a tremendous resource for taxpayers, attorneys, and closing agents alike. The actions, uh, listed above, as well as many others, are a direct result of our employees, and we have six employees here in the Luzerne County courthouse, one employee, a part-time employee in our Hazelton office. We also employ a full-time and a part-time title specialist who do all of our title research for our judicial sales and any distributions, uh, any repository sales. We also established a toll-free eight-hundred number, which is staffed by four additional employees in our call center, which is located in Ben Salem, Pennsylvania. So if anybody can't get through to our phone lines here in the county, or if they are down for some reason, they can always call our eight-hundred number and get an answer from somebody in the call center. Our company acts as agent for the Luzerne County Tax Claim, as I mentioned earlier, and conducts all tax sales, uh, including the upset judicial sale yearly in accordance with RETL. This alleviates the cost for the county, and we pay any upfront costs that are associated with these sales, including advertising, sheriff's, uh, service, constable postings, filing charges, mailings, and title searches. We do provide in-house legal counsel to assist staff, and that is Attorney Sam Falcone. I'd be remiss not to mention his name. Uh, he would've been here tonight, but he is on a vacation with his family. But he has, uh, really built up a great relationship, uh, not only with our employees, but Sam also has brought in everybody as stakeholders, and when I say everybody, I mean other governmental offices. So when we are conducting tax sales, they are very oriented to timelines and deadlines and structure under RETL. What Sam has done is, he has brought everybody together so that our judge now knows the timeline that the Tax Claim Bureau is going to use for the tax sales. So we're not just taking six boxes of petitions up to the judge, and he's getting frustrated, saying, I didn't know these were coming, and I don't have time to fifties in my schedule. You know, and the judge now knows that. The sheriff now knows our timeline, so that they could adequately, uh, staff their offices for all the sheriff services. You know, when we're going to sell a property, there could be so many individuals, there could be up to twelve, fourteen individuals or entities that need to be served by the sheriff's department or another sheriff's department in another county. We have to deputize those. So by bringing all the stakeholders together, the preponderance office also filing of the petitions, they are well aware of everything that's going on. Uh, that has really been, uh, paid off and made our sales more successful as time has gone on, so I give Sam a lot of kudos to that. We also employ, uh, a bankruptcy attorney, uh, which also, that helps in the fact that by monitoring the bankruptcy properties on a regular basis, we're assuring that properties that come out of bankruptcy are going back into tax sales if they're, become delinquent again. A lot of people have become aware of the bankruptcy laws, and they'll pull that card the last day before a sale, and we have to cease all collection efforts. That's when we turn it over to our bankruptcy attorney, which is very specialized, and they follow all the structures and all the laws to go after and make sure that they are adhering to the bankruptcy laws and that they should really be under bankruptcy or should be discharged. And once it is discharged, we stay on top of it. But to give you an idea, our services saved a county five hundred, approximately five hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars in two thousand and nineteen. That included a hundred and fifty thousand dollars we spent on sheriff services, a hundred and sixteen thousand in constable postings, a hundred and twenty-five thousand to the preponderance office, sixty-five thousand dollar in attorney's costs, seventy-five thousand dollars in advertising costs, and approximately sixty-three thousand dollars in printing costs. Uh, we also monitor taxpayers who enter into agreements under RETL, and any arrangements that are defaulted are automatically sent to a special upset sale in the spring of this year. We are outholding that, uh, April twenty-third. I would invite anyone, any members of council who'd like to attend. We hold those sales now at King's College Scandlin Gymnasium, uh, through the, uh, great work of your county manager, Dave Pedri, who was, uh, bridged that gap with Kings and allowed us, because we were getting so many attendees to our sales, that we were actually running the risk of breaking any fire codes trying to hold them in the judges' chambers upstairs. So now we hold them in the gymnasium of, uh, Scandlin Gymnasium. I thank, uh, Mr. Pedri for putting us together with Kings. But, uh, we've created also hardship policies and assistance to county in adopting these policies so that to help, help alleviate the tax burden on elderly individuals. All of this information is readily available on luzernecountytaxclaim.com. Uh, in two thousand and sixteen, we started collecting, uh, delinquent taxes under a hybrid collection model, which combines RETL and the Municipal Claims Act. And basically, what that does is it places the cost of collection back to the delinquent taxpayer. The county opted in on it, and as such, the county and select municipalities and school districts receive a hundred percent of what we collect, as opposed to us keeping the five percent that's indicated under RETL, and they would only be getting ninety-five percent of what we collect. So that has paid off tremendously. Uh, using both the laws, the county realized, uh, an additional one-point-two million in collections and proceeds from two thousand and sixteen through the end of two thousand and eighteen. And again, a list of that, of those municipalities and school districts that opted in is found on our website. So that is just a small snapshot of, of the improvements that our company has made to the Tax Claim Bureau. We're very proud of the accomplishments we have made through the last ten years. We would look forward to continuing the relationship we have with Luzerne County. Uh, I think that we have a great working relationship with the county offices, and, uh, I would appreciate any support in renewing our contract.
Questions?
I have a couple of questions. The correct address of Elite Revenue is listed as Philadelphia, is that the correct address, or is that?
No, that's, that's our, that's our attorney that filed the paperwork.
That's his address, okay.
Yes.
Okay, and then, um?
It's actually on the bottom of the cover.
Okay. Uh, the other is, what was the reason for the restructuring of Northeast Revenue?
Uh, one of the owners sold all of his interests in, uh, Northeast Revenue.
Okay. Is, was there only one chain, one person that left the company?
Yes.
And that person was?
John Rogers, Attorney John Rogers, and he wanted to focus on his law firm.
Okay. Um, let's see, I, that's one of the questions, restructuring. Uh, the lease agreement that we're looking at for the county on the, on the tax claim office?
Yes.
There was a, a lease agreement from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and seventeen, there was no agreement between seventeen and currently, so are you just?
We're still paying.
You're still paying?
Yes.
But you have no lease agreement?
I, I believe that the lease agreement just, from month to month renewed.
Cause there's no, there's, I, I didn't see anything in there unless I missed it in the lease agreement. It said it extends from month to month, but I guess that's just a given.
That's automatic.
That's just an automatic?
Yeah, we're, we're month to month until.
But there was no, there was no increase in rent for, for the whole time that he's been there?
From tw- for the entire, from, from two thousand and seventeen until, I don't, I don't know about.
From two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and seventeen, it was the same price, and from seventeen to nineteen, the same price. So now we're finally catching up and starting to increase for next year, for the lease agreement. So you've been, you've been renting that for five years without an increase, that property? Uh, the convenience fee for payments over the, for the, I received a couple emails from people that say, one hundred dollars for a convenience fee? Does that make sense?
No, it is, and, and that's not our convenience fee. Paying over the internet, it is a standard fee that the credit card companies charge.
Right.
It's a third-party collection.
Was it three percent or something?
Uh, ours is two-point-eight-five percent.
Okay.
If they use a, uh, e-check, it's only two dollars.
Okay, alright, so it's not?
It stays that right on there.
Okay.
You're actually going into their portal when they pay. And that's everywhere. People don't understand that, and I try and explain it as best as I can. When you go out for dinner, you're paying the three percent credit card fee, it's just that they can put it into the dinner. We can't do that, it's on taxes, so it has to be charged as a separate fee.
Right.
Okay. That's all I have for now. Thank you, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Mr. Schamani, try to summarize it. Basically, my understanding, if I'm correct, your office is staffed by your people?
Yes.
You pay rent to the county?
Yes.
We have no, no expenses involved with your office?
Absolutely not.
And you provide us, when you file liens, et cetera, all those fees you take care of? None of that expense comes back to the county?
That is correct.
So, Mr. Chair, how, how is revenue generated, Mr. Schamani, by Northeast Revenue? What, what's your sources?
Well, we get five per, we get five percent.
How's your revenue generated?
Okay, I'm sorry. We get five percent, which is under RETL, okay, to run the bureau, but we only take the five percent on the municipality and the school district. We don't take the five percent on the county.
Thank you.
Mr. Urban?
Well, I was just gonna, any other, any other bids for the position, Mr. Manager?
There were four, there were four bids total, uh...
Let's focus on this and then?
I apologize.
No, no, you can ask that question once we get through. Mr. Urban first.
I'm, I'm looking at the, uh, one section here, it says Elite Revenue Services, uh, or Solutions shall provide the sheriff's office with three printers to aid in the duties under the agreement. That's, that's?
Yes.
In, in one agreement. But then I'm looking at the exhibit on the other agreement that says, uh, the county is, is that, is it true that the county's providing ten Dell PCs, two HP printers, and two copiers?
I've already spoke with the, uh, sheriff's office and said that I will, when we're approved, we will definitely buy the free printers.
Okay. No, what I'm saying, though, is the county's also, but the county's, is this county's equipment that these ten Dells?
You mean in our office?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, I, I mean, that, so in, in one case, you're buying printers, and in the other case, we're supplying printers to you. Does it really make sense to, to do that kind of deal?
I don't know, I mean, we just kept on the same path as the other departments. You know, they change out the computers and put the new computers in.
Right.
They include tax claim as an office of the county.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, and we, but then we're tasked to maintain those computers with our resources at that point in time. Is there any chargeback or anything for?
I don't know if any. There's no chargeback, but I would think that might be part of the rent.
And, you know, I mean, and supplies for the printers and?
I know that we, uh, routinely have the, the print, no, we pay for toner.
Okay.
We pay for toner, and we routinely have the printer service on our, but the computers, I would think that would be part of it.
Well, I mean, it's very vague, you know, so, and, and, I mean, I, I only have a problem with, like, the computer end of it, because if there are computers and they're used by a third party and, and a virus happens to come in and stuff like that on, you know, what kind of protections?
Well, they are on lockdown, just like, since the other departments, you know, since the latest virus.
I'm sure they're part of our network, so they have whatever protection our network has.
Absolutely, but, you know, it is a, a separate entity from the county, they're technically not county.
Yeah, they're, they're.
Yeah, they're their own entity, so what kind of, you know, mitigation or risk, you know, management or insurance or anything like that to protect us, you know, from that liability?
I will review that unless you?
That's all?
Sure.
Okay.
Mr. Snead, did you have a question?
No.
No. Anyone else?
Um, I have one more thing, if you could.
Yeah.
Uh, in number four of your, uh, agreement, uh, and I think it's, uh, after terms, it has the disclaimer in there about certification regarding criminal matters. Did you explain that reason for putting that in there?
I believe that was the county law office that wanted to put that in there.
Okay. So if, if anything comes about from the corruption cases or the issues with the bribes and all that stuff that you guys, if you guys are implicated in that, then your contract would be canceled?
Right.
That's fair enough, thank you.
Anyone else for Mr. Schamani? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, we appreciate your time, thanks for waiting.
No problem, I appreciate moving us up the agenda.
Yeah, well.
I apologize to anybody else who get moved back.
Well, the rest of us have to be here for a while, so, but thank you again.
Thank you.
Mr. Haas, you wanna ask that question, Mr. Pedri?
There's, there's four proposals. Um, like, Mr. Urban asked me to, to, to get them copied for executive session tonight, which I did, but obviously, your executive session ran a little long. I will leave those four proposals with Chair for you to review them, if, at your convenience over the next two weeks, if you would like to do it. In addition, I'm sure the chair would, would have an executive session if you would like to?
Absolutely.
Uh, review those, those four proposals, they're up, they're one of the four.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, I'm going, just, now we're back to number three. Uh, this was the resolution that, Mr. Griffith, right?
Yep. Um, the reason for the resolution, and we can discuss on this resolution, is because, and I appreciate Mr. Pedri's explanation earlier regarding the bridge, the money for bridges being used, because that was a direct question to one of the citizens that asked about, you know, how are we gonna be sure that two thousand and twenty-one, we don't end in the same situation? And that was the purpose of this order, this resolution, was the kind of mandate that the manager spend the monies that are collected for the, to get our match first, and then any monies that are left over, he's obviously at liberty to spend on roads or whatever he requests to do. Uh, I don't see anything in the original ordinance that was passed last, uh, last time we met, that puts any restriction on that, uh, on that money. I don't see anything in that ordinance that says it has to be used for bridges exclusively. So, uh, my concern is that we wanna make sure that we use the entire amount of money that's collected by that vehicle registration fee first for getting the match, and then any additional funds, if we have a half a million dollars left over that's eligible for roads, he's at liberty to do that. But at some point, I just would like to, I would feel much comfortable if we had some way to protect the, uh, the funding, to make sure that it chooses for its intended purpose first, and then any excess, and that was the purpose of the resolution.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. McGinnly.
Absolutely.
Yeah, um, I learned my lesson. I'm not gonna be, I learned my lesson. Every dime that we get will be spent on bridges, um, over this, uh, that, that we receive, I learned my lesson. Every dime that we get will be spent on bridges, um, over this, that, that, that we receive. There's going to be a monthly report, into division report, as to every dime that comes in with regard to the five dollar fee, the checks that go out, the projects that come in, um, on the bridges. If there's any excess after the bridges are completed, I will sit down with council and I would say, this, we have this amount of money, we're recommending this road or this bridge or something along those lines, or hopefully Penn Dot kicks in some more money at some point, down the road, that would be ideal for us, uh, as, at, at that point, but that would be, uh, my intention. But every single dime that comes in from the five dollar fee will be utilized for those next three, those three bridges. Um, and I think it's a good opportunity to, to, to truly fix those.
And I appreciate that explanation, and I, I'd be more than happy to pull my resolution based on his explanation for that, and certainly appreciate his candor on that, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have an issue with that? It sounds like Mr. Griffith is going to withdraw that at this point.
Yep.
And for the manager's statement, we'll see that money spent on the bridges and acquire the two million dollar match the state provided. Correct? Correct, Mr. Pedri?
Correct.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, just a general statement regarding, like, monies that are, that are coming in or unanticipated monies per se. Um, I know in the past, you know, when I sat on council the first time around, uh, throughout the years, you know, when, when, Mr. Pedri was the actual chief solicitor at the time, and, um, he brought ordinances to council at that time, you know, where, um, if there were monies not budgeted in those fiscal years, we, we actually had ordinances where we would put the money in a certain account number, and also of corresponding expenditure.
Well, we had budget amendments, I think.
Right, I mean, back, back in the day, or back then, I mean, it seemed to be more frequent back then, but, you know, I mean, obviously throughout the year, you can.
We had several last year because the District Attorney's Office had a couple of grants that came through, and she needed, you know, to have that. Into her budget in order to be able to fulfill the obligations that came with those grants.
Right, and, and I think Mr. Griffith, and my own, and my concern was, is that, you know, the money that did come in, uh, came in, in an unbudgeted line item, and it was expended in an unbudgeted line item, and that's, that's what we want to prevent in the future from happening, because, you know, we want to be accountable to, for every penny, but not actually know where it's, where, you know, where it's coming in and where it's going out honestly, you know, and openly, so we don't run into a situation like this in the future.
Okay. Moving to division reports at, to the end, in order to use our time efficiently. Discussion regarding the resolution authorizing adoption of Pennsylvania Department Conservation Natural Resources. Resolution page for the Community Conservation Partnerships Program application.
If I may, Mr. Chair? Um, looking at, at this one, ladies and gentlemen of council, as you know, like, the, the Riverfront Park is near and dear to my heart. Uh, it's the last piece of county recreation that we own. Uh, I've been working with our state legislatures, uh, as well, working on different grants, we've been pretty successful, um, over these past couple of years. Representative Prashinsky's office brought this, uh, grant to our attention. This is a two hundred fifty thousand dollar grant, uh, request that will put in a kayak launch, um, into our Riverfront Park, so that people can utilize, uh, the, our, our beautiful park and hopefully get on our river more often. Um, I just met with a, uh, an individual, uh, who, you know, is, is involved in economic development, uh, and they, they're from outside the area, and they said that, you know, the millennial generation is not really concerned with the nine to five area so much. They're more concerned with the five to nine and weekends, and what are we doing for quality of life into the area? These are the types of additions that I think, um, a, a millennial generation would, would, would be interested in. I see the influx of the apartments coming into this downtown city of Wilkes-Barre, and having a, a, a very busy, beautiful Riverfront Park, uh, the last piece of county recreation would be a goal of my administration. Um, uh, I'm asking for council support of this grant, it's two hundred fifty thousand dollars from DCNR. It does come with a two hundred fifty thousand dollar match, uh, that, the county would have to provide, it would have to come from the Act thirteen monies. So once again, that's state money, so it would be state money fully funding this entire, uh, project. Um, if, if the, if the council would, would so choose to move forward with it. If the council does approve it, I still have to, A, get the grant, and B, get the funding for the Act thirteen. Uh, so that would be a long process from there, but I wanted to bring your council's attention, uh, I think it's a good opportunity for the county, um, to continue to move us forward, and continue to put more and more assistance into that, into that park, without going to Loseran County taxpayers and asking them to pay more money for this.
So this is just for approval to apply for the grant?
You're allowing the county to apply for a grant?
Questions?
Mr. Haas?
Yeah, Mr. Pedri, hats off to you, I, I love kayaking, I'm not a millennial, I'm Gen Z. But I'm not a boomer. But, uh, I, I, I love that generation too, I think everybody would be into kayaking. Um, just, just my concern with this is, it's still Act thirteen money, it's still things we can program and other things.
Mm-hmm.
We have a legislative, uh, committee with the rate tax issue, and there's a, a law, a bill passing through that perhaps, they could program the Act thirteen lineups at some of those costs, if it comes to that. To my concern, this, this just seems like something that, like private enterprise, we've, we've had kayaking companies before upriver, up, where it's a little more lucrative, and I know they've, they've had struggles over in recent years. Um, I just don't want to spend public money on something that maybe private enterprise could do, uh, just a concern I have for the, for the discussion for all of council, Mr. Chair. But, um, you know, I see value in it. I think when Dr. Reisinger was here, uh, a couple of years ago, he talked about making the Nesbit side a little more viable over there too. He was telling me, and maybe some other people, there, there used to be, um, a crew team, I think through Wilks was there. I think if we could touch base, and maybe somebody here is familiar with that, and maybe somebody in the crowd, I think if we could touch base with them and maybe have their input too, before to sign on this as a council, but I, I don't want to poo-poo the idea, I think it's a great idea, I, I really do, but, um, I just want to make sure we do it optimally.
Sure, yeah, listen, it's, it's, it's not a hundred percent grant, uh, from, from this, we would have to come, I, I want to be clear, in, in no shape or form would I ever recommend the money come from a general fund, uh, in order for this project. If I'm able to get the funding from another state entity or some other piece of property, or if I'm able to raise money from a private entity, uh, as well, uh, for the match, that would be the goal, but it's two hundred fifty thousand dollars, I'm going to try to go after it.
Yeah, I understand, I understand, thanks.
Anyone else?
Uh, well, the only, the only thing, I, I think we have a, don't we have a boat launch at Nesbit Park? Is that what Harry was just talking about?
It's a mechanized boat, it's even more kayak, but yeah, there is a boat launch.
So they can, could they launch them, um, they could obviously launch kayaks from there, right?
I don't know enough about kayaks.
So, I don't, I, I think it's kind of, I mean, I don't think it's totally a bad idea, the problem that I have is we have a lot more things to spend Act thirteen money on than a boat launch.
At this point, it's a request to make the application, whether it's successful or not.
But if he can't get the matching funds, there's no sense of doing the application.
And, uh, as, you know, Mr. Haas stated, and the manager stated, if there are other sources that may help us with that match, we should seek them out.
So, if, if, just to be clear, so if he applies for the match, and he gets.
He applies for the grant.
For the grant, I'm sorry, he applies for the grant, and he gets approval for the grant, and he doesn't get the match, then he get, doesn't get the grant.
Correct, I would have to, I have to inform.
So there's no, there's no loss of applying?
Correct, you're right, I'd have to, I'd have to apply, tell DCNR that we can't make our match and we're not going to be moving forward.
Yeah, there's no harm as far as, uh, the county's stance or whatever.
Does it, could I add to, Mr. Manager, do you know offhand if it's, if it's, has to be public funds, could it be a, a public-private thing?
I don't.
If some entrepreneurs want to say, yeah, we'd like to help build one of those, or utilize one?
I don't know for this specific grant, but my, the way I've worked with these people in the past is they don't care where the money comes from, the, the state, as long as it comes from somewhere, whether it comes from other state funding, um, a county, uh, general fund, or from a private entity, or something along those lines. Um, but, you know, I'm asking the council to put us in the ballgame, um, and if we do get approved for that grant, then I would sit down with you guys and say, hey, listen, I'm going to try to come up with two fifty thousand dollars this way, um, and move. I, I like the idea of a private entity, maybe branding it or something, that could be something that, could be something, I don't know. You know, name, name recognition or something along those lines.
The nature of our game is to, to leverage those state funds for what we need here in Loseran County, because we, we, uh, we don't take advantage of that enough. We have taken advantage of usually, so, uh, I'd support that context, but thanks for what you do.
Okay. Six, seven, and eight, we moved to the voting session and had a first reading. We have the questions in regards to six, seven, and eight, which are tied to the road that was done down in those three municipalities. Obviously, we'll be very pleased to turn the roads over and allow the municipalities to take over the major repair.
That was, that was my, my comment, is that, you know, this is, this is a step in the right direction, to get these county roads taken over by the municipalities, and I, I applaud the municipalities for stepping up and doing it, because it takes a lot of burden off of county taxpayers, and they're there. They can take care of it a whole lot easier than.
Yeah, they're on site.
So, I agree with the manager for going out and getting that done, I think it should be done on anything that we do in county roads.
Well, I think he's made the offer to, uh, many municipalities, hopefully we have some others that decide to take advantage of that.
I think, I hopefully this publicity kind of grows.
Anything else? Okay, division reports, Mr. Manager, I'll ask you to just summarize it, and any questions?
Mr. McGinley, I have one more thing that I forgot, when Northeast Revenue was here, if I could, is that, that should be an ordinance for the resolution? That should be an ordinance according to the, the resolution to approve a contract for tax claim, for the, for the agreement. That should be an ordinance, not a, not a resolution, so I would ask the Office of Law to take a look at that, see if that's according to the, according to the Restla law, it should be an ordinance.
Well, uh, preliminarily, and Attorney DeLuca and I, uh, just, uh, started to research it this afternoon, maybe a few hours before the meeting, uh, I just want to know for, and we will, uh, make a final determination, but at this point, I want council to know that on April fourteenth, twenty ten, uh, the commissioners by unanimous vote, did pass an ordinance that, um, according to the statute that Councilman Griffith cited, uh, to provide for the appointment of private sector entities as an alternative collection method, subject to all the notices, timeframes, enumerated fees, protections for property owners contained in the act, all as more fully described in the complete text of the ordinance, ordinance. Uh, as I said, that was, um, approved unanimously by Commissioner Petrella, Cooney, and Urban. Uh, on that same day, under a different motion, they appointed, uh, Northeast Revenue.
By resolution?
By, uh, by motion.
By motion.
Not, not by an ordinance, but, um, I'm just looking at the, uh, minutes from the meeting.
So you'll review that with.
We will review it, but at this point, uh, a reasonable, uh, interpretation of the statute is that we have complied with the statute based on the ordinance that was, and the language of that ordinance that was passed in twenty ten. Um, but we will look into it and have, uh, a more detailed, uh, opinion about that.
So if I understand, probably what you're saying is if we wanted to switch it back to the county collecting, we may have to do an ordinance.
Yes.
But because their language in their ordinance says they're authorizing us to do it outside.
Correct.
It says private.
We don't have to redo that.
Correct, that's our initial interpretation, but we will confirm that.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Division reports?
The main thing I want to talk about the division reports, and obviously I, I, I'll discuss anything council wants to discuss. Uh, I wanted to put, uh, on council's radar that we have been served notice, unfortunately, from Wexford Health. Uh, they are our, uh, medical provider, uh, for our prison, council approved that contract in November. Uh, they were the low bidder in that, um, in that, in that contract negotiation process, it was a long process. Uh, they have served us with notice that they are, they would like to get out of the contract within a hundred twenty days. Um, uh, per the, per the contract, that is their right to do so. We are entering into negotiations with them, uh, to see exactly what the story is. Uh, I have authorized a short, uh, window RFP to be posted, uh, in light of the fact that if, if I can't, uh, secure Wexford to stay with us, um, then we'll move on to a, another provider, um, in this timeline. It's going to be a quick turnaround, Mark Rukovich and his team, and as well as Ramila Crocamo and her team have been, uh, have been on this, um, and are, are working very closely with the matter, but I want to be clear with county council as to what the next steps are. Uh, we will never have a time where the county does not have proper medical coverage, I will be very clear with everybody in this room. Even if it means Wexford staying on past a hundred twenty days, we will, we will make sure that that is the case. But we have been provided notice, uh, regarding this contract, and we're going to move forward, uh, with either renegotiating that, probably not renegotiating that contract, but sitting down, talk to them, um, and moving forward with this, the short-term RFP, uh, for hopefully a second vendor to step in. We did get, received numerous vendors, uh, for that first proposal.
When is the actual date that the, the contract would be terminated?
They serviced with a hundred twenty day notice last week.
Okay, so probably like around March first, so you're looking March, April, May?
We're going to be moving.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, sir.
On that, on that issue, uh, Mr. Pedri, do we have any, and I don't have the contract in front of me, but do we have any provisions in there that penalizes them for doing that?
Well, I'm, I asked, uh, the county Solicitor's Office for a full and complete legal review, because I think that whether or not we've relied upon these things, uh, to see if there's any sort of litigation, uh, that we can do for a specific performance of their contract during this timeline. They do have the right, per the contract, that, uh, was negotiated in, that, uh, of, they can walk out with, after a hundred twenty day notice. Obviously, if we're going to do this again, we're going to extend that number, uh, but this is an incredibly large contract, it's over two million dollars a year that we provide to them. I, this is the first time in, in my time, as, as, as county manager, someone would walk away from that amount of money. Uh, but, uh, if this is the case, you know, I'm not going to speak ill about that company, we're going to work with them, see if we could over the next, next, next time, next, next couple of months, and move forward with potentially a second vendor.
Might, might be a learning experience for us possibly in future contracts, to put some language in contracts that are large amounts, or any contract that says if you default, if you want out of the contract, you certainly can get out, but you're going to be responsible for costs incurred to reprocess.
Right.
Rebid and all those type of things that we're now going to have to incur.
Yeah, it's been a, uh, it's.
And I know this is unusual that that happens, but it might be something to learn from, for sure.
Definitely. So that's, uh, my division report for now, I want to put that on council's, uh, agenda, uh, and, and give you a heads up on that one. Uh, I'll keep you informed, um, of the next step, hopefully that RFP will be on the street by the end of the week.
Okay.
Um, and we'll keep you informed.
Very good. Mr. Schiner? Mr. Rabo?
I've waited a long time, as far as the, uh, what was on the agenda, you know, the work session, for the tax collection to come up, ever since Hazelton City went into Act forty-seven. Tax collection, well, first of all, the mayor, no surprise that I disagree with the mayor as far as the tax collection goes. It won't come as a shock to him, but, uh, the short story is Hazelton went into Act forty-seven because the Hazelton mayor withdrew the, uh, procedure that, uh, Hazelton City uses for its delinquent tax collection through the Loseran County Redevelopment Authority, through, for monetization. It caused a shortfall of around eight hundred thousand dollars, which the city administrator at the time said, he didn't recommend that, and he, the mayor went through with it anyway, and this was when he became mayor of Hazelton. So, now, he's saying, because it's, you know, beneficial for Hazelton. Well, how's it beneficial for Hazelton when it causes shortfall of that much money that it went into Act forty-seven? I don't see any benefit to that, I don't, and you could ask anybody in the city of Hazelton if it was a benefit, it's not. So, that, I, I hope you, uh, can take that, you know, for what it's worth, because of the fact that also there's me saying it at city council meetings, along with Hazelton City council members, who are vehemently opposed to what the mayor did, and still some of them do to this day. Also, something to consider when, you know, uh, for this tax collection, is why is it that the city of Scranton is entering into litigation for the delinquent garbage collection through that vendor? It was in the newspaper in, uh, the Scranton Times, and it was carried in the Hazelton Standard Speaker, uh, about three or four days ago. It wasn't in any of the Wilkes-Barre papers, so, that I think needs to be considered as well, by you.
Thank you.
Uh, I have a question, though, um, uh, for the, uh, for the legislative committee, Mr. Oz may be, might be able to answer it, and the other members, uh, with regards to the blighted, uh, database for the blighted committee, if that would be up for consideration, for discussion, uh, at the blighted property committee, so that way the city's.
Dress that with Mr. Haas, he'll keep you informed, I'm sure.
Okay, so, that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carr?
Jason Carr, Sailorsburg, Pennsylvania. Uh, David, I would just like to understand your rationale behind wanting to maintain Northeast Revenue. Uh, you know, they've, they've committed felonies, uh, in the towns of Reading, Scranton, Allentown. Mayors have gone to jail, uh, over this. What are the overriding determining factors that made you decide on Northeast Revenue?
Please address your questions here, please, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman McGinley.
Yes.
Have you ever been offered money, gifts, or other items from Northeast Revenue? Or Mr. Pedri?
Well, when you're done with your comments, I'll answer that.
Or Mr. McGinley, or Mr. Pedri, have you ever asked Northeast Revenue for gifts, money, or other revenue to secure a contract with them? Because, as history has indicated, they're willing to pay the bribes to public officials. I know this upsets Mr. Snee right now, but it's something that everyone on council must.
No personal.
Take into consideration, please don't interrupt me, Mr. McGinley.
Please, please do not use the personal.
I, I'm, I'm.
We asked you that several times, Mr. Carr.
I know you have.
And I would appreciate if you'd follow that.
It's something that the county continuously finds itself in, mired in corruption. So if you continue to do business with people that are corrupt, what is the impression that gives the general public? Secondly, Mr. Pedri, did you receive any type of discount when you prepaid the contract with, Maverick Strategies? What, what was, what was the reasoning behind prepaying a sixty thousand dollar contract upfront to Maverick Strategies? And what's, what's your relationship with, uh, people that work there as well? And have you accepted any bribes or payments from them? Thank you.
Thank you, and, but the answer's for me, or no for both your questions, thank you.
Uh, the answer's for me is no for all those questions, ridiculous. But I would say, uh, that I, you know, county administration, uh, recommended, uh, Northeast Revenue based upon. that, you know, county administration recommended Northeast Revenue based upon a committee that was put in place. Those individuals interviewed the people who put in the proposals. Couple factors at play. First thing would be the 10 years of service to the county. Second thing would be the, a lot of the other proposals put more and more fees on the county taxpayers. And the other proposals as well would not choose to waive the 5% that the county, that, that Northeast Revenue is doing. So in effect, Northeast Revenue is collecting our taxes for free. The other proposals didn't offer that. So it would be a, for the taxpayers, we'd be actually be paying more if that were the case. That was, that went into our recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Manta?
Thank you. I calmed down quite a bit. I had a couple of good cookies. All right. The question was asked to Mr. Pedri about the misappropriation of funds. All right, so we got over that.
Can we stop saying misappropriation has an incorrect use of that term, by the way? That's a, that's a felony, misappropriation of funds. That's an incorrect term.
Okay. All right. Misuse of funds.
It's not a misuse of funds either, but okay. I'm having trouble with you.
Mr. Manta, have his time at the podium, please. Thank you.
Okay. So what type of instrument or what type of things could we put into the county council to prevent this from happening again? Second question. There should be a lot of caps put on a county manager so that he would have to come out to the county council to ask for their permission for using taxpayers' money. Now, Mr. Pedri asked about the Susquehanna River. So wait a minute. If it's such a dirty river and Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority is saying that it's such a dirty river, why do you want to take people's lives in their hands and putting them into this river? Another question. Susquehanna River Watch bought nine kayaks, threw money from the county. They also bought a boat. You guys are looking at me like I'm a dinosaur with two heads. You better look into that because the kayaks disappeared and the boat disappeared. And it was the Susquehanna River Watch was the group that threw funding through the county, bought these kayaks. So I, I, I think it should be looked into before they pass any more things for the Susquehanna River. Okay? And then the last thing I have is gee, Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority was smart enough to put a buyout contract in their, a buyout in their contract agreement to trap the people in the 32 municipa, 38, excuse me, 38.
Wyoming Valley Sanitation's 32. You're correct about that.
32. So to trap these people into paying this stormwater fee. And that's what they did. They bullied the 32 municipalities and they trapped them into a contract that I think the Lord above would not be able to get out of unless we have a class action suit. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Mrs. Stash first and then Mr. Dwyer, please.
I just have a quick question. Does anybody know what the deadliest animal is on the planet? Anybody? Well, close, but anybody take a guess? The mosquito.
I think it's a little late for us to guess.
Well, I'll give you, I'll make it quick. Yeah, sure. It's the mosquito. And my point with this is in any negotiations that you may have with WVSA going forward in terms of trying to negotiate your fee on behalf of the county, I'm going to ask that you please do not give them land to construct a rain garden. Rain gardens fail. And again, approaching this from the science point of view, if they're not installed correctly, or even if they are, they inevitably fail. And I could take you right by Hillside Farms right now where there's standing water. And it's been standing water. It's failed. It's a failed rain garden. So in any future negotiations, I would just ask that the county does not allow rain gardens to be installed. Okay? That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Dwyer?
I hate to admit it, but my mind wandered off. So I just want to make clear what we can comment on right now at this juncture is what went on in the work session?
Almost anything.
Oh, okay. All right. I just want to make sure. Don't, you know, want to keep with the rules. So Mr. Pedri talked about securing a grant of $250,000 for a kayak launch on the Susquehanna.
To apply for a grant.
To apply for a grant, yeah. Which would then, if he was successful, beget another $250,000 in matching funds?
We need a match in order to access that grant.
Yes. So we're talking about a total of $500,000.
50/50.
No, correct, correct. But the, but the grand total is $500,000 for a kayak launch.
That's projected, yes.
Yeah. This is just my personal opinion. There is a boat launch over there. If you can't get a kayak in the river off of that boat launch, you probably shouldn't be on the water because then we're going to have to call Loseran County River Rescue to come get you. And there's a cost for that. Just another quick question for Mr. Pedri because I do like talking to him. He's all right. The contract, no, this is serious. The contract that you referred to that they, they want to get out, the 120-day contract, how far below the next lowest bid were they?
I couldn't say. I found a couple hundred thousand dollars.
So there wasn't a large difference per se?
Well, a couple hundred thousand dollars, but it was a-
Over a $2 million plus contract.
$2.7 million contract.
Okay, so almost three.
And you got to remember that we have budgeted that amount in the budget. So-
No, correct, correct.
Any change, it will affect our budget.
Is it significant? Yeah, it probably would require an amendment to the budget.
It would be, it would be a major concern because I asked council to approve that amount in the budget.
Did they give a reason for wanting out? Or we can't get into that?
A bunch of different reasons that we're able to, to, to work with. But I, I think that their low bid was part of it and now they're looking at the full and complete cost of the contract.
No, now the rubber's meeting the road, which kind of makes me wonder, should we have negotiations with them too? Or should we just go with the next lowest bidder?
Yeah. That's something that the managers are going to-
No, no, I, yeah.
We're going to, we're going to continue. We're going to click everything. I'm hoping to put that short-term RFP out there and get some good responses.
Okay. That's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else out there? We have a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chair.
For 10. Mr. Haas, was it second?
Second.
Sarebo, on your favor? Thank you.